We only got the one docket. I think I know which way it's going.
Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the city of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Tuesday, September the 4th, 2018. In Louisville Roll Call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan.
Clark Treasure.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, August the 20th, 2018. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections? I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, we have two dockets for payment. The first docket, wastewater docket, is three pages in the amount of $137,755.17. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions or comments? I'll ask for a motion to approve the first wastewater docket dated September the 4th, 2018, in the amount of $137,755.17.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. This evening, Board, we have a second docket of wastewater claims in the amount of $10,209.92. The floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
If there's no questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the additional wastewater claim dated 9/4 of 2018, in the amount of $10,209.92.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. We have no new business to discuss this evening. Comments from Board members?
I have none.
I have none.
No comments? I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:03 PM. We will convene the Board of Public Works and Safety meeting within the next couple of minutes.
6:05.
05. Okay, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the city of Beech Grove. And at this time, we'll convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Tuesday, September the 4th, 2018. In Louisville Roll Call, I'll ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan.
Clark Treasure.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, August the 20th, 2018. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections? I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, we have 27 pages of corporate claims in the amount of $1,054,692.90. Floor is open for questions or corrections.
I have none. Thank you.
I have none.
I have one comment that I want to make on page four. We, about the fourth one down, we made another principal payment on the 2012 bond. We have been very diligent. I credit the clerk and the council for paying our debt off timely, and I don't know how much debt. I think we will be out of debt in '22. Is that right, Dan?
That's correct.
So, we are diligently moving the city to where we have no long-term debt. So...
Dennis, also on page four, the first and second line up there is the 2013 police vehicle leases. It was paid off on this payment, so we no longer have them. And right below that is the fire vehicle leases, which that payment paid them off. And the new police vehicles that were coming up to a 19 for police and fire were paying cash for. So, that helps, just like the mayor said, we're not trying to incur any debt whatsoever.
So, I just want to make that publicly known, that we are diligently working towards reducing the city's debt. So, how can you not be happy about that? Any other questions or comments from Board members?
I have none. Thank you.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated September the 4th, 2018, in the amount of $1,054,692.90.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, we have one unfinished item carried over from the previous meeting, and it's a block party on Belle Fontaine. Are you Ms. Gibbs? We had a couple of questions for you. Come on up to the podium. You are the next contestant.
What am I, am I at the prices right?
Yeah. We had a couple of questions on the intent, so could you walk us through very briefly on what you would like to do?
Well, I actually took a satellite screen capture of Google Maps, because I really don't even want to, I don't want to block off my neighbor's drive either, so I don't even want to go all the way to the alley, just from their driveway to Ninth. So, at my daughter's birthday party Saturday, the kids can ride bikes, and we could put the basketball goal out there, and they can play basketball. So, we're just having a cookout.
We, when we, at our last meeting, we talked about, we weren't very keen on blocking all of Belle Fontaine.
Right.
Fontaine.
I don't even want the alley blocked.
And the alleys there, we weren't too keen on that as well. But we would take under consideration what you just mentioned, so...
Right.
Dave, did you have any follow-up concerns?
No, not as long as that would be all that would be blocked.
Yeah, because I would still want my neighbor to back out, be able to come out of his garage and go towards Eighth, or go down the alley, either way, out to Churchman if he needs to. I don't want to inconvenience him in any way. I just, it's going to be a bunch of small kids, so I just want to make sure that they can ride bikes safely, or, you know, play outside, or we can move the basketball goal right there, and everybody can play basketball.
We also had a question on the length of the block party.
It starts at 6:00. So, I mean, whenever you deem fit is fine. Move it all into the backyard, that's fine, so...
Well, I was, go ahead.
What portion of Belle Fontaine are we talking here?
They're at Ninth. Ninth east to the alley by our house.
So, not Ninth, but from Belle Fontaine, from there to...
No, nothing on Ninth.
Yeah, I don't, I would assume if that sounds all right to the police chief and everybody else, I guess it, I don't know what concerns there would be on that, but...
I thought that 11 was a little late, personally.
Is 10 okay?
Nine? Is nine too early?
Nine's fine. Nine? Okay.
Six to nine, and just close Belle Fountain from Ninth to that gentleman's driveway.
Yeah, right, it's right before the alley, yeah.
We would, and it's this, September the 8th, is it this Saturday?
Yes.
Sandy, any comments?
I'm just trying to pick up bits and pieces since I wasn't at the last minute, at last meeting.
Well, Dave, I entertain a motion to approve this request from Ninth to the alley, and from 6:00 to 9:00 PM.
I'll make that motion. From Ninth to the alley, till 6:00 to 9:00 PM.
I second.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. And we'll, Friday, we'll deliver some barricades there.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you very much.
All right. Have a nice evening. That concludes unfinished business. Under new business, we have several items tonight. First of all is a renewal of a memorandum of understanding agreement with the city of Indianapolis DP Wabbe concerning stormwater services. The city of Indianapolis is renewing their permit with IDIM, and they have to prove that they are working with other municipalities within Marion County, city of Beech Grove, city of Lawrence, town of Speedway, city of South, or town of Southport. So, all we're doing tonight is renewing our portion of their agreement. This doesn't change anything, and all it is, it's the city's partnership with the city of Indianapolis concerning the stormwater permit through IDIM. So, they're asking that we sign off on it, and I spoke with Brad this afternoon, and there's no changes.
Dennis, what would happen if we didn't?
I think...
If we do our portion of the agreement?
I think the city of Indianapolis would be called into question through IDIM on their permit. And it's, we just, we, the last time we did this was April 1st of 2015. Oh, it's up again, and I just asked for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. We are up for ambulance billing contract renewal with Med Bill Chief.
Mayor and Board, I present the Med Bill Corporation Billing Service Agreement. I sent that off to Craig for a legal review. He had a chance to look over that, said it was fine. This will be a four-year contract. Sometimes we have to renew these early, if there's any changes on our part or Med Bill. In it, we also have a compliance package, where they will go ahead and review for any updated Medicare/Medicaid changes, any provider changes. They look out for the billing protocols for state and federal regulations, and make sure they meet all requirements for us. They will also come out and do updated training, one training per shift, on our EMS billing, and they will also review or run reports, make sure it meets all Medicare/Medicaid guidelines. We've had a lot of success with Med Bill, and it's a great partnership.
I was looking through it again today, and I don't know, is there any changes?
The fee increase changed just a little bit. There was a slight increase. Part of that was from ESO. They pay for all of our EMS and fire ESO software, where we can enter that data to have it billed out. And also, the compliance package, what we're required to ensure through the federal regulations, where Medicare or Medicaid doesn't come in, do an audit. Med Bill is responsible, provide all the documentation paperwork for those audits, and it really relieves all the liability from the fire department itself, coming up with all the paperwork.
Floor is open for any questions or comments?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to renew the billing services agreement between the city of Beech Grove and Med Bill.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Next item is community crossings grant. And with us tonight is Bill Hall from United. Bill, always good to see you.
Good evening. I guess the next step to move things forward in the community crossings process would be to put together, we put together an agreement to provide professional services for the 2018 Beech Grove roadway improvements, Phase Two. I think Brian Pearson described things in pretty good detail at the city council meeting last time, but it's mainly for Fourth Avenue, from Churchman to around Fletcher. The scope of the work, basically, that we would do would be to provide the design plans and specifications, quoting documents, help solicit quotes, construction inspection as the work's in process, and then assistance with the community crossings application. And then that application would also include retroactively some work that's already been done this year, including the patching on Grove Wood, the reconstruction that was done on South Eighth, and some work on Tenth Avenue, and try to get 50% participation on that as well. The intent, if all goes well, if things go well this year, would be to have the, well, we need to have the plans substantially complete about the time the application is submitted, which is September 28th, I believe, is the due date. And then possibly even try to get the work done this year, if things go really well. Have been kind of throwing that idea around to contractors that I've been talking to. I think they're all super busy right now. We'd have to see how the pricing goes, and hopefully, good. If not, then we could try to bid it again and do it next spring. I don't know, but hopefully, if all goes well, even get the work done this year. So, that's the plan. And I have agreements that, for United Consulting, to provide these professional services that I described, for a not-to-exceed amount of $35,000, and I have two agreements to get
For the Board, we have a unique situation this year, and this is only going to hap, this is the last time it's going to happen. We have a chance to apply for two community crossings grants in one calendar year. Plus, this is going to be the last year that we can apply for funding for work that has already been done. So, next year, when we do our regular rollout projects, we're going to have to proceed in a different manner. But now, we are eligible for reimbursement on work that has been done, and what we want to do is, we want the state, we want NDOT to pay us that back, so we can invest it in more sidewalks and roads. So, when we, this first rolled out, I talked to the clerk about it, to see if we can even come up with funding to do this, because it wasn't a budgeted item. And then, I had to talk to, we talked to Brad about it, because of the professional service costs, and obviously, the council. So, I think Dan has found some funding that we can work on, along with Brad, so this is something that we want to move on, and take advantage of it. And I think if we spend, what, $80,000, we get a quarter million, or something like that?
Yeah, I think, well, this, the Fourth Avenue, and it's not just the road, but its sidewalks as well, was roughly $100,000. So, your share of that would be 50, and the state would provide 50,000. And then the others added up to roughly $100,000. So, there's another, I mean, that's 200, so you're getting $100,000 in money back from the state, by spending, your $100,000, of which you've already spent 50, and then you'd have to spend the money on the design engineering and inspection.
So, do you have any?
Yeah, the total project for Fourth Street from Churchman to Fletcher is $85,000 with the additional fees. So, we came up with 80. We thought originally it was only going to be 50,000. My only question is, is provided we was not able to get this, this contract would be null and void, the $35,000 fee?
Well, we will incur about a month's worth of cost getting the design going, because we really want to be able to check a box when we submit the, when Beech Grove submits the application, that your design is substantially complete. I think that would, that scores extra points, other than that. And the other thing is, I wouldn't think you would pay the bills until even next year.
Well, no, we wanted to do it this year.
Oh, okay.
Get it off the books.
Yeah, okay.
But, no, Brad was pretty confident that we would get this, and I hope you feel the same way, but I know when I talked to the mayor, there was a possibility that we possibly could not get this, so that was my only concern with that.
Yeah, you don't know when you apply. I mean, we've been really good, we've been very blessed to have this funding so far, but you never know what NDOT will do. They could come back and... Say no, but I doubt it.
I don't know that anybody's been told no yet, in all the applications that have been submitted in the state. And I guess it's taken a little bit of a risk, but then, to get reimbursed on some work that was already done could help you going forward, too.
Any questions or comments from Board members?
I have none.
And I'll ask for a motion to enter into an agreement for professional services with the United Consulting concerning the community crossings grant for 2018.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Want to approach, Bill? We'll, it's one of ours. I know Brian's coming out next week, so if there's anything else we need, but we want
And, thank you, and I thought of something, Dan, as I was sitting there thinking, we would only bill for the work that's complete, so at any point it gets called off, you wouldn't owe, for sure not the construction inspection, and not all of the design even. And then the work that's done on the design would not be wasted, because I'm sure...
We'll do it later.
Yeah, we'll do it probably next year.
Right.
So...
Well, like I say, Brad was pretty confident. When I talked to Brian, he was pretty sure that, you know, they had moved forward on it, but you just never know, and I didn't know exactly.
I'm confident, too, but as soon as I would say, "I know you'll get it," then you won't. But I'm confident, too. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Next order of business is environmental review agreement with, concerning the OCA grant. Mike, did you want to talk us through this, please?
Sure. Good evening, Gordon Mayor. My name is Mike Kleinepeter with Kleinepeter Consulting Group, and I'm an OCA-certified grant administrator. I'm currently helping the city with their downtown plan, that we will see the final product at the council meeting tonight. So, we completed the first planning phase, and now we're eligible for the construction piece. OCA's next round of funding, we have a proposal due October 5th, with applications due November 30th. In order to be eligible for the November 30th application deadline, we have to have an environmental review complete, which means we have to have it sent off, and all the responses received by November 30th. State Historic Preservation Office takes a minimum of 60 days to get through, so if I send that out, you know, mid-September, my response will come back mid-November, so we'll have about 10 days wiggle room, in case they have any additional questions. So, really, if we want to proceed forward, we've got to start that environmental review in order to remain eligible for that grant, if the Board and Council chooses.
Floor is open for any questions or comments? Is this something that you would do, Mike, or have a company do?
No, I do it myself.
You do it yourself?
Yes.
Okay.
Mike, is this over and above the facade? This is the actual inside building? Am I correct on that?
So, the OCA grant is $600,000 for facade improvements. It requires a local match of $150,000. This $5,000 counts towards that $150,000, and it's good for 18 months. So, if we don't get awarded right away, we come back next round, it still counts towards our match. But this environmental review was just for the facade on the outside, correct?
Just for the facade.
Correct.
Okay, my other question is, this only counts as one thing that OCA, that we've applied for through OCA?
Correct. Well, this will take our, this will actually take our second spot because we're finishing up the first. But then the first will fall off, and we'll just have this one.
Okay. Board, do you have any other comments?
Tell me more about the environmental review. What do they leave?
Sure, so I have to send a packet, and I've actually got one here if you wanted to glance through it. But I have to send a packet to eight different agencies. DNR, SHIPO, Department of Natural Resources, Outdoor Recreation and Water, IDIM, USDA, U.S. Department of Interior Division Fish and Wildlife, U.S. Geological, Indiana State Department of Health, and Tribal Consultation. In my environmental review packet, I have to pull topographical maps, floodplain maps. I'll provide a lot of the stuff that was in the planning grant, of pictures of the building, changes we're looking to make. Usually SHIPO asks a lot of questions about, you know, you're changing these windows, show me it was more historic like that. So Pat Jacobs is the architect that worked on that, so I'm sure she'll, and that plan has a lot of that stuff that I need to get us through that phase.
Any other questions or comments? If not, here's what we'll do, Mike. I'll ask the board for a motion to enter in to agreement, or a contract with professional service agreement for environmental review with Mike Kleine Peter. Depended on the city council funding this study.
Okay.
And I'm doing it reverse. Generally, the council comes first as far as funding, but we're in a time thing. So if the council wants to move forward with this environmental review, then we will sign off on it. And we'll know here in about an hour.
Sounds good.
So having said that, motion to enter into an agreement pursuant to professional services with Kleine Peter Consulting for an environmental review subject to council approval.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Next up, chief, request for pay increase, police department.
Dear Mayor and Board, I'm requesting a pay increase for Mary Ann Sabelhaus. Mary Ann is a P A, P A O and works mostly weekends. I am requesting an increase for hourly pay to fourteen dollars an hour. This increase will start September eighth, and the money is in the budget.
The only thing I have a question on, and I haven't had a chance to look. I do not disagree, the money is in the budget. What is the top amounting pay in the salary ordinance for 2018?
It's fifteen and some change.
Okay, then it meets that requirement. And that'd be the same for all these?
Yeah, that was fifteen and the two percent that was increased on.
Well, the, the two percent would be in nineteen.
No, it was increased last year, two percent, but they didn't, I didn't increase their pay to the fifteen.
I have no issue with it whatsoever, then.
Floor's open for any questions or comments?
I have none.
Concerning Mary Ann Sabelhaus.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Chief, another pay increase.
Dear Mayor and Board, I'm requesting a pay increase for Tina Lance. Tina is a P A O and works mostly weekends. I am requesting an increase her hourly pay to fourteen dollars an hour. This would start September the eighth of this year. And again, that is also included in the budget.
Motion to approve the chief's request concerning Tina Lance.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Chief, request to hire a police officer.
Dear Mayor and Board, I'm requesting to hire Zachary Horgan as a police officer. Mr. Horgan has passed all required tests to become a Beach Grove police officer. He is employed by the Mooresville, Indiana Police Department and has passed the police academy in Plainfield, Indiana. Mr. Horgan's start date, if approved, will be September eighth of 2018. And he will start his training then. This money is in the budget. He'll start off as a first-year probationary officer of fifty-one thousand nine sixteen. And it's been in the budget for a couple of years.
This has been a very arduous project, process.
Very, very.
It is unbelievable, the amount of people that apply, then quit, or get kicked out during the process. Very frustrating. So floor's open for any questions or comments?
How many openings do you have right now?
If Mr. Horgan's approved, we have one more.
And Dan, what should you do about bringing him in for?
He needs to come in, fill out all this paperwork, whether or not he wants insurance, things like that.
On Monday, the tenth, is when he will start his road school. And that is one of his assignments that he'll come in and meet with you or the deputy clerk and do his insurance and checking account or however he wants that done.
And that's absolutely fine. I'm not sure what payday will be on at that particular time, just long as it gives us enough time to get it over to the payroll company and get all that taken care of.
Okay.
All right. No further questions or comments? Ask for motion to approve the chief's request to hire Zachary Horgan as a police officer for the city of Beach Grove.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. On the second one, chief, where we add on?
We are waiting to hear from the police academy if they have an opening in October. And he went today, I believe, for his physical and psychological test with public safety medical. Those are things that you have to have for the academy to accept you and for the city to accept you. And hopefully, the academy gives us that opening and he passes the other requirements.
Thanks, chief. Next, next order of business is resignation from DPW. Brad's not here this evening, so Dan, could you read it into the record, please?
Absolutely. Dear Board, I am writing to inform you of my resignation from the city of Beach Grove. My last working day will be September thirteen, twenty eighteen. My hire date was August third, twenty fifteen. I am leaving my position with the city on good terms and of my own free will. I currently have a balance of zero vacation, zero sick days, zero personal, and zero comp time hours. Please let me know if you have any questions or concerns regarding my resignation from employment with the city of Beach Grove. Respectfully, Mitchell Ritchie.
Comments from board members?
I have none.
Mitchell's been a very good employee. Mitchell and his wife are moving to Florida. She's a nurse, and she took a position down there. And I'm not sure what Mitchell's going to do down there, but Mitchell was a good employee. So, motion to approve the resignation letter for Mitchell Ritchie.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Request to hire DPW.
Dear Board, it is my recommendation to the Board of Works that the Department of Public Works be allowed to fill a full-time position in the Sewage Works Department. This position has become vacant due, due to the resignation of Mitchell Ritchie, which will take place on September, excuse me, September thirteen, twenty eighteen. The position will require a minimum Class B CDL and pay the rate of commercial driver approved in the 2018 salary ordinance. The Director of Public Works will begin the process of locating a qualified candidate for this position upon approval by the Board of Works.
Thank you. Comments from board members?
I have none.
I have none.
Now I ask for motion to approve the director's request to hire a replacement.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. That concludes new business this evening. Comments from board members?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
The meeting is adjourned at six thirty-nine PM. We will reconvene on Monday, September the seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, in these chambers at six PM. The city council will convene tonight at seven PM. Thank you. Good meeting.
Good evening, and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the city of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our city council meeting for Tuesday, September the eighth, our fourth, two thousand eighteen. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce, introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Buddy Temple, Councilman-at-Large.
Jim Brooks, Council-at-Large.
Dave Harrison, Councilman, District Five.
Dan McMillan, Clerk-Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Elizabeth Lamping, District One.
Chris Duffer, District Three.
Kevin Day, District Four.
Thank you, council. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to call up the Daughters of the American Revolution. Could you come forward, please?
Welcome back. I have a proclamation for Constitution Week. Whereas September seventeenth, two thousand eighteen marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-first anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September seventeenth through September twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, do hereby proclaim September seventeenth through September twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, as Constitution Week in the city of Beach Grove, Indiana, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideas of the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Beach Grove to be affixed this fourth day of September, two thousand eighteen.
Suzanne?
Yeah.
There you go. Do you like to say something?
Samuel Bryan chapter is here in Beach Grove. We meet at the public library. We offer free ancestry research classes twice a month. Some of our members are in the promoters club, some are in the drug-free Beach Grove Coalition, and some of them were in the Arbor Day Commission. So we're trying to be active here in the Grove. We hope, if you're interested, you can contact us. Our information's at the library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, all right.
Council, I'd like to divert the agenda just for a little bit to let the youth council go ahead and report so they can excuse themselves. So I'll call the youth council and Principal Walters up for a update. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have some exciting changes to the youth report, starting this year. Deja Crouch is here. She is our veteran, having come last year a little bit for the youth report. But we will also hopefully have two of our own student council members who have gone through the election process and are serving at the high school. Join her each month, kind of on a rotating basis. So this evening, we have Juliette Kaufman and Mackenzie McGinley here as well, and they have some information to share.
Okay, so last year, we ended the year with graduation, and sixty percent of our students went to a college for a two-year or a four-year degree. And then twenty percent headed to the workforce, five percent headed into an apprenticeship program, seven percent headed into the military, and another seven percent just took a year off.
So tomorrow is parent-teacher conferences after school from three-thirty to seven. And then this Friday is a game against the Sina for football. And then the homecoming dance will be the September eighth from seven to nine-thirty. In athletics, the football team is three and oh, so that's a turnaround from last year. And then the marching hornet- And then the marching Hornets have their first competition at Decatur Central on Saturday at eight-ten PM. And then the choir's first show is September twenty-sixth at seven in the auditorium.
And for extra curriculars, we have Grease coming up, which is going to be amazing, and Mr. Bush is our director for that. We have a huge cast, and we are doing set building right now, so that's very exciting, and it's all gonna be very well, and it's gonna be performed on November fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth in the auditorium. And also we have BGSN, which is Beach Grove Student News, and that is led by Mr. White, and I'm involved in that, and it's one of my favorite parts of the whole high school, because it really, it helps you get further into what I wanna go into, and it helps you get into your speaking shell and, or out of your speaking shell, and it's just, it's a great experience. And Mr. White is a new teacher as of a few years ago, and he's doing very well with teaching us all, and we'll all be involved.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business is a, we will suspend the council, uh, meeting temporarily in order to hold a public hearing concerning the Okra Grant, revitalization grant that we are in the process of working through and applying, uh, to Okra. So, at this time, I would like to, uh, call Mike Klein-Peter up to the podium to go through the process, and then, uh, once Mike is done, uh, we'll go through the plan, and, uh, our city attorney will call all witnesses. Mike?
Thank you, Council. My name is Mike Klein-Peter with Klein-Peter Consulting Group, and I'm an Okra Certified Grand Administrator. Uh, the purpose of the hearing tonight is to just show the final draft plan you guys received at the last council meeting, uh, to show it to the public and answer any public questions there may be. This plan was funded through the Indian Office of Community and Rural Affairs through a grant for forty thousand dollars. We used a local match of four thousand five hundred dollars. Um, so, do you want me to go through the timeline right now, or do you wanna let, okay. So, that was part one, is the, the plan we put together. Um, that piece now is complete, and so we're eligible to go towards the construction application. Uh, Okra has two rounds of funding every year. Uh, the next round, uh, is due October fifth as the proposal. The application is due November thirtieth. We're eligible to apply for six hundred thousand dollars in grant funds. It takes a local match of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so, for a total project cost of seven hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, there were twelve buildings identified in the plan that were interested. Um, so if the council so chooses, we are eligible to go after that. The next step, though, is we have to do an environmental review on those buildings. The environmental review, uh, costs five thousand dollars, and, um, it has to be completed by November thirtieth for us to be eligible. Uh, there are eight agencies I have to contact, one of which is SHPO, State Historic Preservation Office. Uh, they usually take about sixty days to get through that process, so if I were to start mid-September, that we'll get done mid-November. That only leaves about ten business days wiggle room in case they have questions about these buildings. So in order to remain eligible for the November round, uh, we've gotta get moving on the environmental review. Um, should we choose not to go after this round, the twenty nineteen schedule hasn't came out yet. It's usually offered twice a year, usually. April, October, but, um, we really don't know at this point. So, um, in order to be eligible, we have to have a couple things. One is the, the plan with updated cost estimates. We have to have the environmental review, and we have to have site control from these business owners, so the permission to do this work. So, uh, I'm working with Next Stop Beach Grove on that piece of it. Um, I don't foresee any issues, but that is something we have to do if, if we are to proceed forward with phase two of the, the project. So with that, any questions? No questions? Turn it over to, I'm gonna turn it over to Nola then to go through the plan, the, and the buildings, and tell you what we've been working on over the last six months.
Good evening. My name is Nola Albrecht. I'm a landscape architect, a director of landscape architecture with Shrewsbury and Associates, and was part of the team with, um, in working on the Beach Grove, Beach Grove Downtown Revitalization Plan. Also part of the team was Architecture Trio, and they worked on the facades and the building study, and then Taft Law did the economic development component of the plan. Um, as we talked a few weeks ago, and I, um, presented the plan to you, the, uh, boundaries of the plan is from Emerson Avenue to Eighth Street, East and West, and, um, encompasses from alley to alley, and then on Emerson Avenue from Alton to Albany, one block north and south of Main Street is also included in the, in the plan document. Um, knowing that the plan, that revitalization of Main Street was completed about ten years ago or so, we added to that, and the, um, the intent of the master plan was to look at the, uh, again, the economic development, um, and some infrastructure improvements that could take place. But the real impetus of it was to look at a facade study of how the buildings along Main Street could be improved. Um, working with the team and working with the city, and Next Stop Beach Grove in particular, were, were very key to the plan, but there were also many, um, there were, we had a public meeting, and then there were also focus groups involved, and different, uh, people signed up from the public onto the focus group committees, and the focus group intent of each of those, there was one for economic development, there was one for the infrastructure part of it, and there was also one for the facade study. Um, and so each of the focus groups brought in information, so the plan really is a result of, uh, the vision of Beach Grove. Um, it is, it is in our plan. We took your information, we took everyone, everything we heard, and, um, put that into a plan that, um, makes up the document and sets out a course for future improvements. Um, it's, at, at the end of the plan, or part of the plan, we looked at the existing conditions. We evaluated, um, all of the existing conditions of the city involved with, again, facades, architecture, the infrastructure, and the economic development, and then we, um, went into making recommendations of what improvements could be made, um, based on, again, public input. And then, um, at the end of the document is an implementation plan that gives, it outlines, um, short-term, long-term, or short-term, midterm, and long-term plans, or opportunities with some high-level cost estimates in there, and a call to action for, um, the community, the city, and Next Stop Beach Grove, and how to, um, who might be, um, this cheerleader or the, the leader in making some of those, um, projects happen. There's no particular order those happened, so it's, it's, it's a master plan again that, um, sets in place a lot of, of opportunities, 'cause there are a lot of opportunities. We were real excited, as we were working on the plan, to see what Beach Grove has to offer. It's a great community, it's got a great stock of buildings, it's got a great intact, um, Main Street that's very unique to, um, Indiana, or the city, uh, and, and in general. And we made some recommendations and picked up on some of the, um, key components that we believed that identified the opportunity to really highlight the, um, mid-century modern architecture that you have in place. Um, again, some of the recommendations that we make throughout the document highlights some things that could help to make some, um, additional funding opportunities and, and potentially identifying it as a, an historic district based on that designation of, um, highlighting the mid-century modern aspects. Some of the economic development, uh, issues, or not issues, but opportunities, um, could include an economic improvement district that could be outlined, that could potentially help do some funding of projects, and even look into long-term maintenance opportunities that, or funding of long-term maintenance of the projects that might come about as part of the plan. Um, we, again, we worked with many people. We, uh, Next Stop Beach Grove, and in the document that you all have, it highlights on the first pages the, the team members and the people that signed up and participated in the plan. Um, we're excited about it, and I don't know if there's any other information that you need based on what we talked about last, a couple weeks ago, as to, um, what we're, what we're proposing. Um, I could go through all that again if you would like, um. Okay. Pat, if you wanna come up. We had twelve, um, twelve buildings in particular, building owners in particular, that were interested in participating in the program, and Pat is with Arc Trio. She, uh, worked on the, um, and met, um, specifically with a lot of the building owners in identifying what projects had the ability to work.
I'll go through the various addresses and my, my key name for them, so I can recognize them. Hopefully you will, you'll also recognize the, uh, the, uh, buildings that I'm speaking of. Um, and pretty much going, um, from east to west, uh, two-twenty Main, which is the studio. Uh, the new, um, tenant is a landscape gentleman, uh, at three-oh-two, three-oh-four Main. It's a corner building, used to have the woodworking shop. Ah, there he is. Good. Congratulations and welcome. Um, one of the neat things about, uh, Beach Grove that adds a little bit of challenge for you all is we have a lot of corner buildings, so we have not only facades, front facades of front Main Street, but we have side facades, and his building, in fact, is one of those. Um, four-oh-seven, four-eleven Main, um, which is, uh, insurance company, and, yep, he's here tonight, too. Um, with that, which is an intriguing building. You just have some wonderful buildings in your town that are very different than many Main Streets. Um, five-oh-one Main, which is Rosebud, uh, that has two facades, and we're capturing the little barber shop to the back. Um, five-oh-two, five-oh-four Main, which is the three-story building that Edward Jones is in. Um, again, that has two facades and lots of windows. Um, five-oh-three, five-oh-five Main is the dentist office. That actually encompasses two buildings. Um, six-fifteen Main, which is the antique shop. Treasure Trove, there we go. Thank you. Um, six-twenty Main, X-Dean Shoes, uh, or six-twenty. Did I say six-twenty-two? Six-twenty. Six-twenty-two Main and six-twenty-six Main, which are both buildings that the tea shop or the tea room is in. Uh, seven-hundred to seven-oh-four Main, which is where Victory Bakery is. Again, we've got two facades. And seven-fifty-eight Main, which is Napoli's. Again, we, we have the front facade and we wrap the corner. Did I get everybody? Okay. That's everyone. Any, any questions on any of those?
You wanna speak? Sure.
Sure.
What we want to do now, counsel, is we want to hear from the public, and we want to hear, there's several business owners here. So I'll defer to our legal counsel for a roll call and have them come up and give them parameters of the time.
Sure. Three minutes each, otherwise we're going to be here late in the evening. So first one's Brenda Kyle.
Yeah, I need to wait, I don't want to say.
Okay. Sure. How about Valerie Shank?
Hi, my name's Valerie Shank Burnhour, and I'm a business owner of Treasure Trove in the Grove at six fifteen Main Street. And I would ask for your support in obtaining the facade grants. I believe that it would wholeheartedly benefit Beach Grove. I can't see any reason not to. We need revitalization of this area. We've been in business about two years, and I've seen a tremendous amount of foot traffic in my store from the beginning. So I really believe it's happening, and it's going to keep happening. And we're the last little pocket in Indianapolis to redevelop. So I please ask for your support.
Mike Klein, Peter, I think you already spoke, right? You want to speak again? Okay. How about Pat Jones?
He's already spoke.
He already spoke, too? Okay. Jim Coffin?
Good evening, counsel. Thank you for having us tonight. Just want to ask for your support of this facade grant. I know when we asked you guys many months ago to help fund the planning grant, you guys agreed to that, and we appreciated it then, appreciated it then, we still do. That was kind of the first step in this process. I think we all knew that our next goal would be the facade grant. I think this is a great opportunity for us here as a Main Street and as business owners to kind of continue the work that was done on Main Street over the last several years. The city's done a lot of work to revitalize our area, redo Main Street, the sidewalks and all that. So I think it's our duty as business owners to kind of continue that. A lot of the buildings on Main Street are very old, and they need a lot of work. A lot of them have been well-maintained, but they still, for being seventy, eighty, ninety years old, they need a lot of work. And this will only help us as business owners kind of continue and do that without hurting us too hard, because there is a lot of money. Six hundred thousand dollars is a great opportunity to make a big impact on our Main Street. If you guys go down to Greenwood, they just finished up construction last year for their facade grant. They were awarded that about a year or two ago. They redid many of their buildings, and they still continue to do the remaining buildings that were not done the first time. So I think it only gives us the opportunity to expand on what the business owners and the city and the groups of volunteers and nonprofits here have done over the last few years to get people back to our Main Street. When Next Stop Beach Grove was started about two and a half years ago from the Chamber, we realized that we needed to do something to make Beach Grove the next stop, and that's where the name came from. Because there is no reason why we can't be a busy bustling Main Street downtown area like many of the other areas surrounding us. So I appreciate you guys' continued support of our Main Street area and our business owners and the citizens here in Beach Grove. Appreciate it as well. So, thank you.
Angel McKenna?
Hello, I'm Angel McKenna. I am a resident of Beach Grove. I've lived here for twenty years. I'm also a city employee for the past four years, and I'm the secretary for Next Stop Beach Grove. And I'm just here to ask that you support this moving forward, the grant moving forward. I feel like, as a resident, I guess, and an employee as well, this would be a great move forward for our city. I think we have a wonderful resource here that just needs a boost to help lift it up a little bit, just to bring some attention and bring some economic development and some help to our community, just to bring it all together. So your support on this would be a great move, I think. Thank you.
All right. This next one, I can't read their handwriting. They address is seven fifty-eight Main Street. Oh, okay.
Good evening. My name is Antonia Pizzi, and I own Napoli Villa down next door over here. We have been in business for, since nineteen sixty-two. My parents started the business then. We are going through the third generation now. My children are taking over. And we are very proud of being able to survive this long, and we have done a lot of work in the building. But the buildings in Beach Grove and Main Street are very old, and they need a lot of work. So I would appreciate it if you would consider this project and making sure that we get the grant, so that we be able, as owners of this building, being able with the help to remodel it and make it so beautiful that it attract people from all over, like they do in many other places, like Greenwood and Rotherpool and many other places. Main Street is a dead street. Therefore, it could be made, make a big difference if it was developed properly. But it's dead, because we cannot get people that really become interested in open up shops, any kind of business that is worthwhile. So I would appreciate it if you were to consider it and making sure that we get the money, so we can do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. This next one, I'll just have to give you the last four digits of their cell phone number, three eight oh five. Brenda, do you want to speak?
Yeah. I bought a building at six fourteen, six eighteen Main Street, and I applied for a grant, but I didn't get it, because I wasn't, I guess, part of the twelve. But I know that these kind of grants are very beneficial for revitalization of areas, because I worked as a real estate consultant for the state of Indiana for fifteen years before going into this entrepreneurship. And I'm also opening, we bought the building where Harvey's Tavern is, and I'm opening Walla on Main, which is a wine bar and art gallery, and just got the alcohol permit for it today. And I did get the last alcohol permit for three-way for Beach Grove. But this is very important, and hopefully I can get into the second round, or maybe they'll increase it and include my building, because it is a really great mid-century building. But I'm hoping you approve it, because it will be very important to the revitalization of Main Street.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wants to speak on the OKRA grant but hadn't signed up? You state your name, sir?
Absolutely. My name is Cliff Babbie. I recently purchased the seven hundred Main building from Amy and Mike Masterson. I wanted to share my thoughts on what I saw when I invested in this property a few months ago. What I saw was Main Street that had tremendous potential in a small town contained within a city. It's a very unique situation and setup. Small towns, however, tend to struggle and go down in times of economic difficulty. The whole town can go down. The way that they survive is in times of economic benefit and boon, they invest and act boldly. This is in a step in that direction. Right now, GDP is at four and a half percent. This is a great time to invest. I came and left, I started a real estate investment company years ago. I decided to do it full-time starting January, left my job as director of research at the medical school to do it. This is the first major building that I purchased, because I saw the potential that you have here in front of you. What it requires is actions like this approach for getting outside investment to come in and help develop this street using other people's money for the benefit of the citizenry here. You have a great opportunity here in front of you. I see it, I saw it, I took a large portion of my life savings to start the process here. I hope that you can come along with us and help us with that process, and together really develop this area. I love this place. It reminds me an awful lot of the small-town home that I grew up in, and the places that my wife is from and such. I see a lot of good things here, but I also see a lot of closed doors and papered-up windows as we drive down the street. This will help us change that. So I hope that we can do that together. Thank you, folks.
Counsel, I have. Jeff, you want to speak? Sure.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Mater. I recently purchased the three oh two, three oh four Main Street building. We just started construction. I'm really excited as he just spoke of the potential of Main Street and downtown Beach Grove. It's what drew me to purchase the building, and hopefully within the next month or two, I'll be moving my office and my staff onto Main Street, and look forward to the opportunities that that provides for my people, as well as for what that means for Beach Grove and the potential and the future growth that I see here. I'm excited, I was in the process of purchasing the building before I found out about the facade grant, or the potential for it, and that only made me more excited about the opportunity here to be a long-term tenant in my own building and to provide opportunities for other tenants and other office spaces, or retail spaces, to move onto the avenue. So I would ask again for your support for the grant. Thank you.
I have a vested interest also on Main Street, own a business on Main Street, and I think this council has been very supportive as far as the last time you came to them and asked for money. I'm sure it will happen again. My only thing is, and I know at some point the property owners will have to put some money up, when will that transpire, Mike?
So each community does things differently, and it's usually up to the council to decide how that is. Some communities, the council puts up X amount of dollars, and then they make each business owner put up ten percent or twenty percent to come up with, so that way they have a vested interest. I don't think we've officially talked about what the thing is here, we're still trying to decide, but I think that's something that needs to be talked about, you know, to see. But I don't think there's been that dialogue there yet on where all this money is going to come from.
Well, I think my issue with that is, I'm trying to protect the citizens of Beach Grove in this job, and at the same time, there is absentee owners of property here on Main Street that will benefit from that, and they're actually Beach Grove taxes, so I have a concern there. So I think it's important for someone to make a decision as to when and what amount will be put on the business, or property owner.
Right. So if this project moves forward, we have to have two public hearings and a site visit from OKRA. And in that first public hearing ad, I've got to say where the local match is coming from. So, you know, the first public hearing, I think, is scheduled for the first meeting in next month. If we were to do it, nothing's been published yet. But in the ad I run, which has to run eleven days, so kind of mid-month, we've got to know, we've got to come to some kind of agreement on what the percent is and how many people are interested at that percent.
So today's meeting, though, we're needing to give you...
So today's meeting is kind of two pieces. The first is to approve, we've got to approve the plan that Shrewsbury submitted, and we're going to have to pass a resolution here in a little bit approving it. That ends phase one. Then, really, the discussion is phase two, if we want to move forward or not. And if we do, we have to start that ER, which costs five thousand.
Five thousand dollars, yeah.
Okay. That'll be under new business.
When will we decide the logistics of how much the business owners are putting up, how much the city is putting up against our match for the grant itself?
October.
And then the RDC has committed, correct?
No, I do not think that conversation has taken place yet.
I apologize. I was thinking.
Sure.
What if we go this next step that you're talking about, and then you have your public hearing, the public masses in and says, we've been, we've had it with property taxes, they're just getting too high, you know, and they kill it? All the money's lost then?
So the five thousand dollars that would have been invested in the environmental review is what would probably be lost, yes?
Only five thousand.
Five thousand. I will, if we move forward, I will have a contract with the city that says contingent upon receiving the OKRA grant, that I will be the grant administrator. But if you don't get an OKRA grant, you won't incur any other costs.
Okay, do you need your refresh on what would affect us about what would the taxes be affected, our property taxes be affected, what you see in other, like, small towns?
So most communities don't raise taxes at all for this, they just fund it out of their local funds. Yeah, so that's, their taxes will not be raised.
I think it'd be important to inform the audience where this money comes from.
Sure. So the Indian Office of Community and Rural Affairs, the state agency, gets twenty-eight million dollars per year to give out to communities. They give a portion of it, twelve to fourteen million, to HCDAs. They distribute about fourteen million out to communities, and through grant process, anywhere from five hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars per grant. They've got water, sewer, stormwater, public facilities, facades. You never know how many are applying to compete with. Last round, I think there were four that applied, they funded two. So, you know, it's, you never know how many are going to apply, there could be ten the next time, or there could be one, you know? So to stay in the game, you have to spend five thousand on the ER and do two public hearings. And in the, I'm sorry, you've got the advertising expense for those public hearings to stay alive.
I'm not against, I'm just reflecting what could happen and how it could cost.
Sure. Right.
The owners, the public, and this guy's up here.
Sure.
But at no time has it ever been, it's never been a tax increase. If anything, it will help as a tax revenue. It's actually brings in money, so it would be actually a tax benefit to the city, correct?
He said it's your federal taxes coming back to you through grant money.
So this just sets the stage, this gets us started, this sets the stage for potential, I mean, investments that would definitely help our businesses and, I mean, I just made some notes, I mean, good investment helps us all. It promotes continued upgrades, which is going to help us all, property values all around that area. Growth will expand beyond Main Street. Employment, it gives internship potentials for our students. I think some of our businesses are already doing that, as far as internship potentials for our, and then if they're, talked about the absentee business owners, we've addressed this before, that's actually a positive, because it could push them to make their improvements. It could push them to see what the good that this is doing for this community.
We've got a couple of hands for comments. Go ahead.
Let me understand, so you want the council to approve this decision to go forward to the next step without finding...
...the building owners are in agreement with the financial percentage. Is that correct?
MD wants to talk.
They all know that they are expected to put something down.
But they don't know what percentage yet, correct?
But we told them it would be probably around twenty percent.
And they're in agreement with that?
What?
And they're in agreement with that?
Yeah, they told us how much they were able to put forward, they gave a testament on this application form.
That's the one that they can't afford.
They know that, yes. They know that. They rule out something now, and we just don't know the exact cost yet. They know that you can.
Okay, great.
And these are all agreed upon, no business is being forced into doing any agreement. These are all, this is all, these businesses are stepping up, because this is what they want.
Correct. Hope there's more here.
So when it's all said and done, and you get the forty, and there's a match, and there's funding from the council, and twenty percent from everybody else, is that going to be enough to do twelve businesses that are interested in doing this?
So in the downtown plan, Pat, I don't know where you are. Pat, there, Pat? You want to speak to that?
Sure.
Okay.
It's a lengthy process. And what we do is we begin to hone in on the scope of work for each building, based on what their budget is, what they're capable of contributing, what their twenty or whatever percent. And we fine-tune the scope of work based on that budget and what we can do. So if we, and we've seen, we create what's called alternates. So if we can't do all the scope of work, we'll create an alternate. If we have to take something out, we use those. If we need to add a little bit more, we add some more scope. ...........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
If I'm understanding what I'm hearing, there could be different percentages as far as the match? One person may pay ten, one may pay twenty, or is it going to be standard all the way across?
Generally, we try to have an equal match among all building owners. Now, that dollar number is different, because certain scopes, some are going to be, range from thirty thousand dollars up to eighty-five thousand, is an example, so some people will...
And that's fine, as long as everybody's equally treated. And my other question would be, is if you have to go to alternate businesses because of not having enough, who makes that decision on who's accepted and who's not?
Not me.
Lucky you.
I would answer that by just saying the city.
Yeah, it usually doesn't follow my, I'm my guide on what I, I've seen in the building conditions, but... If you ever cross a business that just refuses to pitch in on this, what happens to those particular buildings, or do they have a hundred percent compliance, it's not sound about this, but it might eventually... Of the, of the twelve that we identified this evening, they have expressed an interest. There are buildings that have not expressed an interest, is that correct? That's correct. Okay, what happens to those? Do they stay ugly, or...
Hopefully, just like when nature would be done, a lot of this is sort of different, after, for some renovations, hopefully it's worth a little thought that goes past nature, just like everybody's saying, I don't know, developing goals, that it'll go elsewhere.
Is that what you found else? Is that what you found elsewhere, Jim? I mean, you said, I think Claire, it was you that said, those that, in Greenwood, that initially did it, then others joined on later on?
There's still, yeah, if you follow, like, Facebook, there's called Restore Old Town Greenland, they're constantly posting new things, that businesses that are moving in, businesses that are changing this, their storefront, getting new windows, so it's continually happening, so it wasn't just that project, and that project was not, I don't remember when, earlier this year, a little bit this year, was it, or last, previous year?
Yeah, so I've got a great example for the city of Greenfield, just, are right in the middle of construction for their facade project right now. There were some business owners that just couldn't get in, but this is only one grant out there, the state has other grants as well, and so I, I personally worked with two other business owners to improve three buildings over there that weren't involved, and this, and this grant opportunity through the state historic preservation grant, it's a sixty-five, thirty-five, so you, you put, a business owner puts up sixty-five, the state will do thirty-five percent, and that one's actually a little more flexible, because you can do roofs as well. So, I, you know, I do understand sometimes some people can't, aren't able to get in this time, there are other opportunities to still improve your, your building. And so in Greenfield, we had two other business owners that improved three buildings downtown. McCleary Sporting Goods was one, and the Twenty-four Hour Fitness with Ms. Congdon was another.
This comes up again next year, though, 2019, this grant's available.
Yeah, this grant, it's, it's usually...
They not get in this year.
Right. And if we were to apply and, and, and don't get awarded, you could just come right, just do two public hearings and you're right back in, there's no additional cost.
And, and you said the, the, these, or the study?
Environmental review?
Right. That's good for, you said two, three?
Eighteen months.
Huh?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months, okay. Rome wasn't built in a day.
When Mr. Mater was talking, I passed out a email that we received today, so Dan, could you read it into the record for the...
Absolutely. Greetings, council members. Just a quick note to show support for obtaining funding. The necessary environmental study is a part of the OCA facade grant application. The professional and expedient continuation of this application process is of great importance to me as a homeowner in Beach Grove, Council District Three. Many thanks to all of your good work. Ben Easley, fourteen ten Main Street.
And then one correction on the public hearing. Main Street was redone in two thousand thirteen, not ten years ago, so I want to clear that for the record. That concludes the public hearing. We will return to the normal agenda. And, council, we will go right to public comments.
Jim Kaufman, you want to speak again?
Go ahead.
Jim Kaufman, three three two Timber Grove Way. The sixth annual Beautify Beach Grove Walk is coming up, that is scheduled for September twenty-second, it's a Saturday, it'll start at nine o'clock down at Sarah T. Bolton Park, come up to Main Street and work its way down to Second, cross the street and back down to the park. This is our largest fundraiser of the year. Beautify Beach Grove is a non-for-profit. In the past, funds from this event have purchased American flags for Main Street, Ninth Avenue, military flags in the park, it's purchased Christmas declarations for Main Street, banners for Emerson Avenue. Last year, we purchased some planters that placed in front of Safeway, and also this year, we placed some planters behind the senior center. So, projects like that, the funds go to purchase those, and we donate them to the city, and then the city maintains them and controls them. But this is our largest fundraiser, so I have applications here if you'd like to sign up. Again, twenty-second, nine o'clock, about a week, and have to sign up to be guaranteed a t-shirt, so if you like one, I have to, so, thank you.
Thank you.
David Grenoble?
Good evening, council members. I'm Dave Grenoble, and I live at one fifteen South Twelfth Avenue in Beach Grove, Indiana. I've sent you guys, I don't know, three or four emails about the landlord ordinance. I want to thank those of you who took the time to reply to the emails, and those that took the time to call and ask questions. And the one thing I wanted to make sure that everybody was clear on, from what I understand, the landlord ordinance is a little bit all over the place. I think what the mayor proposed in April with either updating or adding an ordinance for the multi-units is something you all need to consider. I think there's a safety hazard there, they're not zoned properly, and if you make them get their permits and go to the BZA to get their zoning, then everything's under compliance. So, they can check to make sure that they're all up to code, that they have proper entrances and exits, that the electrical is up to date, and when the property goes to sell, it will be actually registered properly. There's a box in every purchase order, there's actually two of them. One of them says, "The buyer may or may not get out of the contract if they find out the property's in a flood zone," and the other one is, "The buyer may or may not get out of the contract if the property cannot be used for the purpose it's listed as." So, if people are taking single-family residents and turn them into multi-units without registering them, they're in violation of code. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comments. Council, you have two sets of minutes. The first one, you have a printed copy of the minutes dated August sixth, two thousand eighteen. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections. If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes dated August sixth as presented.
I think you might want to approve the minutes for August sixth.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Council, you have another set of minutes dated Monday, August the twentieth, two thousand eighteen. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections. No questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes dated August twentieth, two thousand eighteen, as presented.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Under committee reports, you have heard from the youth council. Ashley, you want to talk about the ABC?
Good evening, council members. We had, let's see, four on the docket for today, and we did an automatic renewal for Beach Grove Bowl, and then the El Morral Mexican Restaurant, they just, they switched their permit to a three-way, which is the alcohol, beer, wine, all together, so that was approved, and then Wala was approved as well. We had one bar on the list that we continued to, October first, they had a violation, it was a silver bullet, so they had some violations on their permits and a gaming permit, so hopefully we'll be able to talk more about it for next month, so, any questions?
I'd ask earlier, the status of the micro brewery?
Yes, they said they're hoping for next, or well, during the Fall Festival to open up, so, I've been helping out a few of the bars in the rest, in the area with, you know, making sure that they're staying in, following their, their codes and the laws and making sure there's no violations, because I hate coming up here and saying, "We have some violations." So, the excise officer, Officer Bell, and I have been kind of meeting with a few of the owners in the area and helping them with whatever they need, and answering any questions, and making sure that they understand their permits and all that jazz, so I've been working closely with the brewery, so, yeah.
Very good, thank you.
All right.
Ashley?
Yes, sir.
You said Beach Grove Bowl, El Morral, and who was the third one, was the automatic renewal?
No, those are the only two that were...
Okay, and then...
And Wala is a new one, yes.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And the silver bullet is up for renewal, but they have violations, so we've continued that for next month, because we need an appearance for that one, so...
Ashley, I have a comment from one of the business owners, said you're very serious, but you are a great communicator.
Oh, well, thank you.
So, I think that's a plus.
Well, I'm just trying to help them out, and we met with Harries, and I've worked with Night Owls, so I'm really trying to make sure that they're all on board, I work closely with Ogeras, just really making sure that they stay on track, and I don't want any violations for our community, so, and those are hefty fines that some of the bars and restaurants can, can get, so, all right, any other questions? All right, thank you very much, have a great evening.
Thank you, good job.
Matt, did you want to speak on behalf of the Greenscape Commission, or? You should have the Greenscape Commission monthly report. Compliance Division and Public Safety have submitted a report. Last one is financial, Dan.
Good evening, councillors. In July, we paid off the lease purchase for the twenty thirteen police cars and twenty thirteen fire vehicles. There will be enough in the twenty nineteen budget to pay cash for new fire vehicles and police cars. We made the following payments in August. The two thousand four SRF, sixty-eight thousand, eighty-nine dollars. There's approximately eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars remaining on the balance of the loan, and we have approximately a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred in the debt service reserve. We also have over sixty-eight thousand in monthly payments account at the Bank of New York Mellon. When I took office, this account had been so severely in the rear that the city had been put on monthly payments of approximately eleven thousand, four hundred. Since taking office, I began putting money into the monthly account with Bank of New York Mellon. So, for example, the payment we just made in August is for our January first, twenty nineteen payment. This precludes us from having, having to make monthly payments. We pay it twice a year now, and they're good with that. We pay it twice a year now, and they're good with that. We also receive interest from the account and the DSR account. I made Chief Swartz aware that the appropriation I had created for capital improvements in the police budget of $75,000 has not been used. This was a new appropriation I had created in the budget last year to help them with some maintenance issues they were experiencing with the building. This is in addition to the appropriation for new cars. I have requested to increase the appropriation in the stormwater fund. Brad could probably give you more detail on what it is used for. The stormwater fund balance as of 8/31/2018 is $206,487.39. That does not include all of tonight's claims. A link to the 2019 budget page can be found on the front page of the city website. A reminder that our 2019 budget hearing start time is at 6:00 PM next Monday, September the 10th, 2018, instead of the usual 7:00 PM start time. On Friday, August 31st, 2018, we hosted an open house to thank Deputy Clerk Debbie Springer for her service to the city of Beech Grove. Debbie's last day of employment was Friday. Debbie gave us a 30-day notice and was able to train our new clerk, Angie Hoffman. Angie comes with experience from the BMV and additional experience in accounts receivables and payables. I believe she will be an asset to the city and the taxpayers of Beech Grove. Community events can be added to the website free of charge by emailing me at dan.mcmillan@beechgrove.com. Thanks to the website volunteers who continue to keep it updated at no cost to the taxpayers. Financial reports, debt service, bank balances, and more can be found on the city website at www.beechgrove.com. The bank balances are listed below. Two that we use the most is the city corporation account. Had a balance as of Friday, $2,988,669.20. The utility account had $1,295,324.19. As always, if you have any questions, my door is always open. Thank you. Respectfully submitted, Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasor, City of Beech Grove.
Questions for the clerk? Thank you. We'll move to unfinished business. General Ordinance Number 12, 2018, is tabled. We'll move to General Ordinance 13, 2018. It is the housing. The ordinance is up for second reading. You should have, council, you should have received tonight from the clerk a series of pictures and a, the fourth page is a zoning request. And I want to go through this with you because someone, one of the council people had sent me a text about considering making a motion to withdraw this ordinance. And if you look at these pictures here, first picture is of the house, and the quality is terrible. It's my cellphone. 111 North Fifth. Today, they were declared a nuisance, issued a ticket. On page two, 131 North Sixth. They have already been declared a nuisance, but not an environmental nuisance, a public nuisance, because the police go there on too many violent domestics. Plus, the grass, now they're getting ready to be an environmental nuisance. And the last page is 116 North Sixth. He is getting ready to get his third ticket. The reason I wanted to bring these three out is because they have the same, they all have the common denominator, and that is, they are rental properties and the owner of the property doesn't live here. But yet, we have to sit here and look at that every single day. And I know Dan wants to talk about it. But on the last page is a legal notice of public hearing for zoning. Tomorrow, our BZA will hear from a person who wants to convert a single-family dwelling into two-dwelling units. Exactly what the gentleman spoke about here 10 minutes ago. Forty-five percent, .9% of the homes in this city are rental. You can't continue to go on this track. I don't care who's sitting up here. You got to stop it. You got to slow it down. And this, we'll have testimony tomorrow, and I'm sure DMD will say they oppose this. So, Dan, I'll turn it over to you.
Staff has already opposed it and requested denial, which is still left up to our board. They've requested the same thing previously on other properties, and they passed it anyway. But I think it's very important. We had just talked about this a few months ago at a council meeting when Vito brought up the fact that, you know, what's stopping these people? I said, "Knock on wood, we've never had that issue since you and I have been in the office, and here we go tomorrow, and it's a possibility it could happen. We could go from a single resident to a multiple residence." This one that they're doing tomorrow, there's already two or three properties right within a stone's throw away from that that have as many as five units in it. And, you know, I'm not sure how many of these have ever went through zoning, but this one here, they're actually going through zoning. And I, it's a scary situation. We had one on Sixth Street where a person lost their wife, a child, because what I would say is, you know, a multiple-unit property that probably shouldn't have been. But that's my spill on it. So anybody that might be opposed to this, or if you're for it, tomorrow at 1:00, the BZA meets and you can see what will happen.
So, and I've talked to several of you. To me, the fee to charge is way too high. But I think it's important that we work and get these rental people. Some of them are really good. They're good, no problems. But some of them are bad, and we have to do something to reach out to these people and clean up some of these properties. So, and in the ordinance, its perbatim on zoning is not permitted after 1969. We didn't write that. We didn't make that up. That came straight from DMD. So that's good stuff. So I'm done. I'm done talking about it. General Ordinance Number 13, 2018, is up for approval and second reading. The floor is open for any comment.
Well, first of all, would our, can someone specify, would our ordinance necessarily have anything to do with this going to the Board of Zoning Appeals? That wouldn't change anything, am I right? Okay. And I have to agree that what Dave brought up is one of my biggest concerns. The problem is about people changing single dwellings into who knows how many. I mean, you're all of a sudden could have 16 people living in a residence that is really, you're looking at possibly a regular family. The problem is, is that people do this with or without the law, we're not going to know. Here's a person that apparently is trying to go legally, probably will get denied, as it sounds like. But my point is, is our ordinance has nothing to do with it, even if it was in place. Second of all, I had the chance to meet with one of our citizens and go down a street and ask me to pick out some homes. Now, anyone, I'm not going to say her name, but she lives on Ninth Street, and she knows her stuff. And I did, I picked out two, and the two I picked out that were the worst were owner-occupied. The best house on the street, a couple of them, was a rental house. And so, though I agree that, I just wanted to bring this part out, though I agree that with the mayor about the fee being too high, my concern is that, is basically that people do register and that we try to do the best we can to educate. But our ordinance isn't going to change this legal notice. It's still going to be in the hands of the zoning appeal to make that decision. And second of all, and I don't know if I also had any comment, but second of all, I have concern with a few things else within the ordinance, but basically the thing that Dave mentioned, the mayor mentioned, that one I think is very serious. I don't know how our ordinance changes that, though.
Well, I've liked, Mr. Temple, and I've had opportunity to meet with homeowners plus persons that have rentals, and, you know, both sides strongly want something done. I mean, I think our goal is to get some kind of a, is it like a registry or accountability or some kind of a resource to identify, you know, home, homes that are rental? And likewise, I've talked to a lot of people. I think that putting the meat of the penalty, you know, for, when there's been a penalty, instead of putting it up front for the licensing, I know, and I've got, from Indianapolis, they charge $5 for licensing fee. I'm not saying to go that low, because I was the one who recalled in a previous meeting the $150, which I apologize for that. But I know Indianapolis charges a $5 licensing fee, so. And people who with rental property actually have a 2% property tax, correct? So they actually pay more in tax, property taxes. So I think the whole goal is to work together for a good outcome, to have, work together for a good outcome, and that's to make sure, get people more accountable for their properties, which will affect all of us in the entire city. So number one, I think the licensing fee is way too high. And do we, are we sure that we're not in any murky water when it comes to legal? Because I think all of us have received an email from another citizen about some issues with the ordinance. I just want to make sure that legal has looked at it to make sure that we're not, this ordinance is not going to, we're not going to have repercussions from it because of constitutionality, I guess.
So, as you know, if I wasn't copied on the email, I just got this 10 minutes before the meeting started, so I didn't have a chance to do the entire thing and do a deep dive. But I can say that this 2018 KC site, that may have some merit. I have to read it. I'll take him for this word that it may have an issue about the high fee recharging. But, you know, some of these other things that we looked at a few years ago about being, violating the due process, clause in equal protection, being a public take, that simply is not the case. So I'll be happy to have a back and forth with the person who wrote this, if they'd like me to, but, other than the, I think the major point he does make in here is the fee. I think that's the thing that I think maybe has some resonance, but the rest of it, I mean, all, if you go to city codes throughout the state, almost all these cities have renters' codes for the reasons that some of the councils already articulated here. So that's all I had to say.
We all received this, and I don't know if everybody's had a chance to read it from the citizen that they're talking about. And I think I'd feel a lot better if City Legal had a chance to go over this very well before we vote on this. So to that end, I'd just assume table this ordinance until Craig had a chance to look at this and come to a conclusion that what we're doing doesn't cause us to be personally liable.
It's only a second reading, isn't it? I say we vote on it for second reading and let him do it. Got a month. I do agree, though, the $150 is probably way too high.
Yeah, I was the one that brought up changing the, the 75 to 150. And since then, I have talked to a few owners of rental properties, and some rent to their children, some rent to their neighbors, to the family, and some of them are just, they're not making any money off their property, and they have three or four properties. And I also talked to a gentleman who does not, he travels a lot. He's got properties, and he may not, he don't know what's going on. I think, going back to the $75 that was proposed to begin with, is the best move.
Ken?
Yeah, I've got a question. You've got it, the license is good for one year. Down here, it says they got to take safe rental training within two years. We make that six months of safe rental training?
The only thing would be
Why would you make a license?
The availability of the program. They claim to run them quarterly, but I would say the only deterrent to that would be how often does the prosecutor's office do the program?
If they missed that one because of quarterly, then they'd be pushing the six months, I would think. It's a year.
Change it to a year?
And again, would give them time, you know, for people who are not available, not on-site, so maybe they do live away from the area.
I'm not going to
Unless there's a program in their area, I don't know. We're specifically saying our rental, our rental education program.
I know this is the, it seems like, I say it a lot, and getting to be the table counsel of the world here, but I'm just going to speak my mind that I have to agree with Chris that it should be tabled. Not done away with and met on the next meeting, so.
Your regular council meeting?
Yes. I don't, I'm just saying that sometimes we table things and there's a little more indefinite to it. I think in this case, I would feel better, because I was more in the mind to vote no, not to, because there was a few, there was just too much to tweak through, and it would be easier to vote no and start all over, but I'd be, feel more comfortable with it.
Yeah, I would too. I mean, I'm not an attorney, and the person that wrote this is, and I'd like for our attorney to look at it fairly carefully and let us know that we're, we're within the law when we make this ordinance.
And out of fairness to our attorney, he was just throwing a couple of things to think about that he didn't have time to look at.
Right, he hasn't had a chance to look at it.
Your motion?
I'll make a motion to table this ordinance until next meeting.
I'll second table in this ordinance until the next meeting.
We'll vote individually. Ken? Table?
Table.
I would like to lower the housing rental and then continue on like Mr. Harrison suggested. So I would, I would, I think we have time to get, to get legal advice on it between now and then, if we could lower the rental unit, the licensing fee. So I guess I would vote no to table.
Dave? No. Jim?
I agree, we need to change the licensing fee, and even if we pass it to second ordinance, we've got a full month to tweak everything. We can't, I'm just saying no at the table.
Buddy?
Table.
Count is three to three.
Three to three, fails.
The mayor, does the mayor not get a vote in this case?
Want to tie, or is that? Ken, but he cannot. In other words, if he wants to break the tie, he can, but if he doesn't, that's his dis-
I have the option to break the tie or just remain silent.
You can remain silent. Three to three, it fails.
But I can vote to-
Yes.
Oh, I vote to continue.
Table.
No.
Oh, continue on, okay.
Third reading at the October first meeting.
We still have a motion.
We have to vote on it, we have to vote, yeah.
What are we going to decide on the licensing fee, though? Are we going to make a-
Make an amendment, please.
Do we need to make an amendment for the licensing fee?
Yes.
I mean, I don't know what the other council, I think, I'm almost wondering, seventy-five is too high. I mean, Indianapolis is five dollars, I know-
I think we should probably make it five dollars.
Indianapolis is just five dollars. Is that enough to recover, it was a five dollar-
Indianapolis fee is five dollars, but they have a pretty good penalty if you do not register, was where they come in at. What that is, I don't recall. But, yeah, there is this five, but it's, if you don't register an appropriate amount of time, then you can be fined a greater amount.
I would say that we would be on better legal footing were we to emulate Indianapolis and their ordinance.
What do you think?
Well, I think one thing it shows, this isn't about money, and I don't have any problem, I'd still say I might vote no, but I don't mind trying to correct things that I see as a problem, and I think our fee being too high.
What do you get to say about that?
I'll just say, our people here in Beech Grove are paid a lot more than what they are in Indianapolis. They've got a multitude of personnel there. We've got one. So, I think it would put an undue burden on my office for five dollars, and I'd just assume zero fee if that's the case.
Okay, right, so I mean it would-
Would you say twenty-five would be fair?
Well, you're talking, our people make twenty-five, thirty dollars an hour in that range. So, do you want them tied up just to doing rental and letting something else go? If you had to hire someone to do it, you're going to-
How long would it take them to issue them?
I don't know. I don't know what's involved in it or anything else, but-
I hope we get a lot of people that would come in, because that would show they're registering and that they can exchange information both ends, but-
And then at that time, you know, then it's got to go to compliance or somebody else, so you've got a level of personnel that's going to be tied up for-
Well, we started at seventy-five and then went to one hundred and fifty. How about fifty? Would anybody agree to fifty?
Somebody will have to make-
I agree with fifty.
Fifty, I'll-
Somebody will have to make an amendment.
What'd you say, Dave? Somebody speak.
It's, I understand the fees, it's not going to be a deterrent. What you guys are doing with compliance and what you guys are doing with the police become a nuisance and making people accountable, the landlords that aren't taking care of their property will either get tired of being responsible and sell their properties because they don't want to take care of them. But this fee, all they're going to do is pass it on to the landlord.
I still don't quite understand why a renter would be subject to anything different than a homeowner. We keep putting them in, and I don't have property, I rent. I've got a home and that's it. So I have nobody that has a cousin or a brother that owns property in Beech Grove either, that as far as rental. But I, you know, you got to cut your grass, you got to cut your grass, whether you rent or whether you don't rent. I mean, I don't, I don't quite understand, so.
Okay. Can we look at a low fee like Indianapolis and a, for non-compliance, then a higher penalty structure? I would say that, that would be an avenue to pursue. What do you think about that, Buddy?
Well, it's, one person sitting over here, I do agree with, Dave makes a comment we've heard before, that whatever we put on, whatever we put on there is going to be passed along, most likely.
Well, the idea is to bring them into compliance, is-
I, that was what I said a minute ago, I think our goal is for the city and for the person renting the property to exchange information, and I think that should be our main goal.
You can emulate the city of Indianapolis, you could charge a dollar, you can charge nothing, but you could get these people, the key is get these people in here and get them registered.
I agree with, so, the fine has to be higher for non-compliance, not in, you know, for the, no matter who it is, whether homeowner or-
What's the fine now, two hundred, is that what it is?
Yeah. Well, any property up for license renewal that has pending orders or has been declared either a public or environmental nuisance shall be charged two hundred dollars for renewal. That would be page five.
Five and six.
Yep. Landlord licensing required.
What's Indianapolis charging?
That I don't know. I don't know, I don't know their penalty structure.
Well, I would make a motion that we leave the two hundred dollar penalty and lower the fee to, I don't know, five dollars.
I'd go with twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
One thing we do have, and I don't sit on this report, is our compliance department, when they issue tickets or letters, normally they have a pretty good record of getting the problem corrected. And here on this letter, it doesn't indicate, other than it just says tickets out, so on. Usually the other ones show the success in handing, dealing with residents, I don't see it in there, but just lucky to that, when compliance deals with somebody and they don't specify rental or non-rental, usually, as far as I see on the paperwork, it shows people comply, so that's another thing. And I brought that up, each council man, I have brought up, when they've come up, made a report, I'll say that it sounds like, that here it shows that there was, that everyone got in compliance. So, as far as our records, I don't understand, it's never been tilted out of, or someone's not putting the right numbers in, so I don't know.
Chris, what was your motion?
Well, I made one, but I'll retract that, and I'm going to go with what Jim said. I'll make a motion to change the fee to twenty-five dollars.
There's a motion, a second? Kevin, I'm sorry, Kevin. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
That's fine.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
General Ordinance Number Thirteen, Two Thousand and Eighteen is up for approval on second reading only with the amendment. This time I'll ask for a motion to waive the rules to read by title only.
I'll make a motion that we read by title only.
Second.
We'll start with Buddy.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
I'll ask the clerk to read it into the record by title only.
General Ordinance Number Thirteen, Two Thousand and Eighteen is an ordinance that replaces Chapter One Fifty-Five, the Code of Ordinances Concerning Residential Housing Properties in the City of Beech Grove.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Thirteen, Two Thousand and Eighteen is up for approval on second reading only. This time I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Should we do a roll call, Dan?
Or at least see if anyone's opposed, but-
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Three to three.
Three to three?
It doesn't fail, the mayor has an opportunity.
I vote to approve it on second reading. We will hear it on third and final reading at the October first meeting, and I'll provide a new copy to you.
And then we'll make sure we get a complete legal, okay.
That concludes unfinished business under new business. Resolution Number Five, Two Thousand and Eighteen is up for approval. That is the mitigation plan that was presented to you by the Office of Sustainability with the City of Indianapolis. Kate Robertson came out, and unless there's further questions, I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution into the record, please. Dan?
Resolution Number Five, Two Thousand and Eighteen is a resolution to approve and adopt the Marion County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, which was passed by the City-County Council on July sixteen, Two Thousand and Eighteen. Whereas the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of Two Thousand was enacted to establish a national disaster hazard mitigation program in order to reduce the loss of life and property due to such events and to provide disaster assistance to state and local governments. And whereas the DMA Two Thousand requires local entities to prepare and adopt a multi-hazard mitigation plan in order for National Flood Insurance Program communities to be eligible for future mitigation funds and to be eligible to receive projects grants under the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, as well as for other grant programs. And whereas the Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan is required to be updated and resubmitted to the Federal Emergency Management Agency every five years. And whereas the Marion County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan update is a multi-jurisdictional planning effort led by the City of Indianapolis, Marion County Division of Homeland Security. And the Marion County Mitigation Plan update dated July sixteen, Two Thousand and Eighteen was prepared in partnership with the City of Beech Grove, City of Lawrence, Town of Speedway, and the City of Southport. And whereas the City-County Council supports reasonable efforts to make the community better prepared for future disasters and better able to recover after disaster strikes. And whereas the City-County Council body recognizes the threat that natural and human-generated hazards pose to its residents, their property, public infrastructure, and the health and safety of the community at large. And whereas planning for and implementing actions that avoid or mitigate the impacts of hazards before disasters occur reduces the potential for harm to people and property and saves taxpayers' dollars. And whereas the City-County Council has provided notice of the plan and opportunities to comment to its local partners in disaster mitigation, has participated jointly in the planning process with the participating jurisdictions. Whereas the City-County Council body is required to adopt and approve this mitigation plan update in order to remain eligible for future mitigation and grant funds. Now therefore be it affirmed that by the City Council of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, Section One, the City-County Council of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana, hereby adopt and approves the Marion County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan updated dated July sixteen, Two Thousand and Eighteen, which is to be utilized within the City of Indianapolis, Marion County. Section Two, this resolution shall be in effect from and after its passage by the Council in compliance with Indiana Code Thirty-Six-Dash-Three-Dash-Four-Dash-Fourteen.
Thank you, Dan. Questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number Five, Two Thousand and Eighteen.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number Five, Two Thousand and Eighteen.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. Resolution Number Seven, Two Thousand and Eighteen is up for approval this evening. That is concerning the Okra Planning Grant, and at this time I'll defer to the clerk to read it into the record. Dan?
Resolution Number Seven, Two Thousand and Eighteen is a resolution approving the plan for downtown revitalization. Whereas the City of Beech Grove had identified adequate reason to analyze a downtown revitalization plan. And whereas the City of Beech Grove has received federal community development block grant dollars from the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs to fund this study, and has contributed four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars as a local match for this project. And whereas the City of Beech Grove had reviewed the process and completed study thoroughly, and is satisfied with the services performed, information contained therein, and methodology applied. Whereas each city council representative has received a copy of this document for their records, and a copy will kept, be kept on file in the clerk treasurer's office for future reference. And be it resolved by the City of Beech Grove that the final document is hereby approved. Contingent, upon comments and approval received from the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs, the City of Beech Grove will fully consider all comments and feedback received from the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs, and will direct its consultant to provide amended copies of this plan reflecting all said comments adopted by the City Council of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, this fourth day of September, Two Thousand and Eighteen, at seven p.m.
Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Now, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 72018.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. Hey, Dan, we did two.
Uh, two copies, yeah. Thank you. Will you sign that one? I'll fill it in after the. Just two total, right? It's supposed to be the same length check? Yeah.
Earlier this evening, council, during the public hearing, there was discussion on the environmental review request as part of the Okra Grant. This environmental review cannot be longer or older than 18 months. So when we redid Main Street five years ago, we wouldn't, we're not able to use any of that documentation for this purpose. The Board of Works approved the professional service agreement with Klein-Peter to conduct this environmental review with the stipulation that the council approves the funding. We didn't sign off on it until after I, we hear from you folks tonight. So I want to open it up. This is part of the process, as you heard earlier. And I'm asking tonight that the city council approved the funding of this environmental review. So I'll open it up for any comments or questions or concerns.
Well, I've heard from several business owners and citizens of Beech Grove who are all in favor of it. So I say we move ahead with it.
Make a motion, we approve it.
There's a motion on the floor?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. And then we'll sign those documents before we leave tonight for you. The next order of business is not on your agenda. The clerk has requested to position you to do an additional appropriation or transfer of funds in the stormwater category. Dan?
I passed out a copy of this to all of you. Dennis and I talked about this, and he didn't think I really needed to do it. But just for clarifications, we're going to do it. Permission to increase appropriation number 605-900-310.001, stormwater. The original budget was $350,000, and after this evening, that appropriation will be in the negative, over $75,000. Please allow me to increase the appropriation an additional $200,000. There is money in the fund to cover this. Respectfully submitted, Dan McMillan, clerk treasurer. And what's happened here is we've got some bills that is due Westler, and I've been sitting on them since the last Board of Works meeting because it ran the appropriation in the negative. And so before I get council approval, I won't mail them, so.
Well, you're usually pretty good at budgets. What happened that you were not good in this category?
Well, I just think, you know, I'm not sure what he was spending all the money on. I mean, we've been doing projects and things like that, so I don't know. You know, we just used what was done in the past, and it wasn't enough money. But this will deplete that fund until more money is put into it.
I got a question.
Okay.
I see these appropriations before. And they've always got appropriation number 605-900-310.001. Where do they get that?
That's a good question, though. Each one of them is a different, different section of the budget, and it goes down into 000001. But each one of them means a certain thing for every department.
Did you have a question, Chris?
No, I already asked him.
So there's a request from the clerk to transfer funds in stormwater. Are, would that be right, or was it additional?
Additional appropriation of $200,000 into that fund.
I'll make a motion to approve this fund transfer.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Now, let me clarify what the clerk said a few minutes ago. The Sewage Works Utility is a separate entity from local government. The budget and the net revenue is controlled by the clerk treasurer, who serves as the secretary and treasurer of the sewer utility. My contention to Dan, when we talked about this the other day, is he doesn't need to come to you for approval for additional appropriation with anything that has to do with Sewage Works Utility. Dan has carte blanche authority to move money in that Sewage Works Utility without any approval. That's where I'm coming from. He can spend every penny out of constructions, sanitary sewer construction. He can save it on, he could spend it on trash trucks if he wants to. He has that authority to do it. That's my contention. I don't, but the clerk treasurer is the secretary treasurer of the sewer utility, and he has the carte blanche authority to do that. He also has the carte blanche authority to move money from the return of investment and pilot generated from the sewage works into the general fund. He doesn't have to have approval from anyone.
And what he's saying will happen next month with the return on investment and the pilot payment. And I just think you guys should be informed. I don't think, you know, because we're not talking pocket change there. But one thing I do want to clarify, a budget is nothing more than a guesstimate. You know, I might guess we're going to spend $10,000 in gasoline. We might spend $25,000, you know. I'm just using it as an example, but, you know, it's just a guesstimate. And if you've noticed, at the end of the year, I'll come back and say, well, I'd like to move money from this to that. That's in the regular budget, but what Dennis is saying, the sewer is a separate entity of itself.
And I asked Brad the other day. There has been over $354,000 worth of projects and other storm-related things done in the City of Beech Grove so far this year. And that's the $3.75 everybody pays on your sewer bill every month. That money comes into it, it's documented, and it has to be spent on sewer-related items. Cannot be used to buy fire trucks, police cars, trash trucks. Has to be used for stormwater-related items. Now, seven years ago, we didn't have that fund. And we were robbing from Peter to PayPal, but now we do. So that's the story. Last item under new business is, I just, this is just for your information. We have renewed our agreement with the City of Indianapolis. The City of Indianapolis has a permit through IDAM for their stormwater MS4 program. They have to prove to IDAM that they have a working relationship with the City of Beech Grove, the City of Lawrence, the Town of Speedway, and the City of Southport. They have to do it every four years. We're up for renewal right now. So earlier, the Board of Works renewed the agreement for four more years. So this is just for your information, so. That concludes new business. Council comments beginning on my left.
Thank you, mayor. General Ordinance Number 13, the.
landlord rental. I hope if anybody has any suggestions or comments, please bring them forward to anybody, but I would certainly like to hear them. I want to thank everybody for coming. We had a pretty big group here. But one of the things that comes to mind was Next Stop. And I see Jim and Chris, and there's, there's others all involved. But I was thinking at one time, what in the world is, what in the world are we starting here? What is this group? But it's, it showed that it cares about Beech Grove and that it's trying to do well for the citizens as well as the businesses that are on Main Street. I didn't want to say we got an RDC member here. We've got one from the Greenscape, and it's always good to see them present as well. And I want to just quickly say that on the booklet plan it was given, as far as the project on Main Street. I'm a little slow, but boy, with all the pictures and being able to follow through with it, it was very self-explanatory, and I appreciate that. And in closing, to Pam and Mr. Busby and to Dave, you guys asked some pretty good questions that kind of sewed up a few loose ends there that I'm sure all of us think about, so I appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, I'd like to commend Dan. He didn't have to bring this up. To me, he's kind of proven to, to the city and to the council that he, even though he didn't have to, he wants to let people know what's going on, and I commend him for that. I will do appreciate everybody showing up for this meeting. Thanks for your comments.
Thank everyone for coming. And Jim, I don't know if you've been down to Greenwood. I was last Saturday. And their, their facades are a lot nicer, and they're, they got scaffolding everywhere.
It's a lot taller out there, too.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. And I think it's a good thing. That's all I got.
Well, likewise, I applaud our downtown businesses. I mean, the energy is just, it's great. I mean, I love the energy. I love the dedication. It's great to see people see the vision in our town, and, and we welcome you, and let's just keep moving it. Let's do it. And I'm excited to see how we can just keep growing, so thank you so much.
I'm glad to see the business owners on Main Street come down and take an active part in this and want to move forward with that project. I'm grateful to the people that did participate, Mr. Busby, Dave, and I'm glad to see you back at it, Pam. So that's all I have.
I just want to thank everybody for coming, and please keep Matt English, our athletic director, in your prayers. Couple things. The Fall Festival's coming up, September twelfth through the fifteenth. Homecoming Parade is this Friday at five P.M. Cars Arrest Car Show is at the end of September. Beautify Beech Grove Walk is September twenty-second. And in your packet, you should have a copy of General Orders twenty-eight, two thousand and sixteen. When you folks change the alley directions north of the hospital, it says it will revert back to its normal traffic pattern when the project is completed. The project is completed, and it has reverted back to its original traffic flow. I just wanted to put that in your packet just for your information. And the last thing I want to say is if you were in City Hall every day and listened to the people who come in and complain about their neighbors and their property, you would get a different perspective on this rental code. There is no way that anybody should tolerate somebody who has weeds that tall, junk cars in their driveway, and grass that's out of control. It's unacceptable, and if you don't hit these people in the wallet, you're gonna, it's just gonna get worse. You've got forty-five point seven, nine percent rentals. Two years from now, it'll be forty-seven percent. Five years from now, it will be fifty percent, and you will lose your city if you don't get a hold on this. Same way with these people cutting up these houses and four apartments. You gotta, you gotta put your foot down, and you gotta go after it. Today, just alone on South Fifth, we had a house that had, was issued their third nuisance, environmental nuisance ticket. Twenty-five hundred dollars. They refused to do anything to that home, and guess what it is? Take a guess.
Rental.
It's a rental property. I'm looking at one. You know, you, you, you got a letter from me the other day. Yes, you live at three seventeen?
No, I don't. No, but that's what I'm talking about.
Are we going to adjourn? Ron, are we going to adjourn? Yeah.
I live next door, so get your fax straight.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second. Meeting is adjourned. Dan, I don't know what time.
It is.
Eight forty-six.
Eight forty-six.